Judicial Committee. Call to order, and next we'll have a roll call.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Lozara.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
All right. I'm making a resolution to accept the minutes of February 9th.
February 9th.
Second.
Oh, roll call? What? Yeah, it's like a roll call.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Is there any questions on it? Okay, passes. All right, the next one, I'm turning over to Alderman Winger. She's going to handle it.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Coles. As part of a subcommittee, the Clean Air Accounts Committee, we have been looking at a service with H.R. Green. That's one of our main engineering firms. And this is a planning method of saving money for our residents on green initiatives, as well as, we'll take you through the presentation, there's a way to also increase our revenues as well. And we learned initially about this at one of the conferences that some of the Alderman attend every year. It's Illinois Municipal League. And that's how this started, so going back to last September. And Alderman Woods, I know you were interested in it as well and asked to look at it. So our committee, the Clean Air Accounts Committee, has been looking at this for several months now and fine tuning this. So Alderman Coles, myself, Chief Best, as well as the committee members, have been at this. So with that being said, we have Jen Winters with H.R. Green, and she's our point person for this alliance. And she's going to go ahead and take us through the presentation. And if you have any questions throughout, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. So with that, Ms. Winters?
Hi, thank you. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk to you. As Alderman Winger mentioned, my name is Jen Winter, and I am an engineer with H.R. Green. I have a specialty in sustainable infrastructure and community sustainability. We are here tonight, thanks to the Clean Air Accounts Committee. We came and spoke with them a few weeks ago about this program and how this program might be of interest to the city of Wood Dale. We are teamed with Zero Carbon Alliance. And I also have Michael Renzi on the line, I think, from California. Michael, can you hear us? We are testing your technology, and it appears to be working very well. I was a little nervous. But Michael is joining us from California. H.R. Green also has a small California office, which is how we got teamed with Mr. Renzi and Zero Carbon Alliance. We, in talking with him, discovered that we had some similar interests. We had been talking with a lot of our municipal clients about what we could do to help them on this front. And, you know, a lot of you came back to us and said the same thing. We are interested in this, we would like to take this forward, but we really don't have any funding aside to do so. So we sat down with Zero Carbon Alliance and Michael, and we have formed a partnership to bring a program to communities that can hopefully either help you start or further some of your sustainability initiatives without having to invest much of your own or any of your own additional capital. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight, about this program, and give you an overview of kind of how this program works and can be of benefit to the city, if I can get it to work. There we go. Like I said, we've got a teaming partner in this. Most of you are familiar with H.R. Green. And what we do, as far as specialties in local and state government, we have a department in renewable energy, water, transportation, community development. And the specialty that Michael and Zero Carbon Alliance bring to this is focusing really on reducing carbon emissions, reducing utility usage. We've got several pieces to this program. Tonight, we're basically mainly going to focus on the residential program, or our public service phase of this program. We will touch on some of the other phases of this program. I know when we were speaking with the Clean Air Accounts Committee, there was definitely an interest in looking at the commercial phase or the business phase of this program. Tonight, we're really looking at focusing on just the residential piece that we'll get into in a little bit. And with that, I will turn it over to Michael, and he's going to talk a little bit more about the details of the program.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have one question about the shopping discount. How do you go about that for the shopping discount?
It depends, as far as the commercial phase.
For the residents?
For the residents.
Well, do you have a...
The reward card.
The reward card.
It was under resident, but it's more commercial, yeah.
That is really more part of the commercial phase of it. That would be if, when we involve the chamber and the businesses in the program.
Okay.
Then as the businesses get involved, we can issue, and depending, there's... It's flexible, depending on how the city would best want to do it. But we can issue independent cards, rewards cards, that go, so if you're a resident participating and a business participating, if I'm a resident, I can come into your business and get a discount because we're all part of the same program. The businesses benefit from this by the increased revenue or increased businesses coming through their door just by everybody being a part of the same program.
So it would be the business and the resident, or whoever it may be. So the business must have the on the program?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would be voluntary. The business and the resident are both part of this voluntary.
So you're only going to get a discount at that business?
I'm sorry.
You're only going to get a discount at that business?
At the businesses that are participating, right.
May I do one else? I noticed when we first started, you talk about the kits.
Yeah.
How much are those kits?
They vary depending on, there's quite a few kits. There's not quite a few, but several kits that are set up for different styles. For instance, if I'm in an apartment, there's a specific apartment kit versus a standard three-bedroom, two-bath home kit.
Let's just go a house, we won't get into apartments. So what is the cost then?
Through the program, it would be discounted at $149. It would typically be $199 through, without the city discount program. And if you went in, I don't know, Michael, do you have an estimate on, you know, what those products would cost? I believe it's maybe upwards of $400 if you went out and purchased all those items individually outside of the kit and put them into your... Plus the convenience of not having to go to Lowe's and find some things, and Home Depot and find some things, and going online and shopping for some things. And, you know, it's not a, like Michael mentioned, it's not a standard... They're not standard kits that you can just go in somewhere and buy anywhere else. It's something, it's a program that has been put together, these parts and pieces to make up these kits.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lozara.
Where would the consumer get these kits? Or the residents get these kits?
Good question. It would actually be through your website. What we would do is work with the city and put materials on the website. We would provide the marketing materials, and again, work with the city and how that is best done, whether it goes out with standard bills, or emails, or however you feel it's best to reach your citizens. And that would give them a link back to your website, which would behind the scenes go back to our website to handle all of the tracking and the accounting of it. But to keep it simple, it's just really a logo that goes on to your website.
It would be shipped to the resident?
Directly to the resident, yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Thank you. As Alderman Winger said, I'm kind of on board with the zero carbon, you know, sustainability, excellent. And some of the things in your kit are good things. First question would be, you know, even at $144, let's call it $150, a lot of people can't afford that upfront, especially at this time. Do you have any programs to... Whereas they could go to the store, they might ultimately wind up spending more money, but at least they could do it piecemeal a little at a time and gain savings a little at a time. Is there any programs that you guys have put together to help out?
Well, there would certainly be an option to buy a smaller, you know, to downsize some of the smaller kits, you know, say, maybe they could, would want to go with an apartment-sized kit, and that may not get them their entire house, but that may at least get them started and help them. There's also... Go ahead, Michael.
And you, second question, you touched on all these things could be bought at Lowe's or whatever other store you might have mentioned. Or for the most part, all of them. On the part that we couldn't buy, what is in your kit that a resident couldn't get somewhere else?
Michael, I'm just going to interrupt you for a minute. That, one of the things you mentioned, and it was hard to hear when it came across, was the, I believe, the dishwashing, squeegee.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you explain that one a little better for the...
That's really a scraper that is specially designed to have to keep, to prevent you from having to rinse all of your dishes and save on the amount of water that it takes to go through. If anybody pre-rinse their dishes before they put them into the dishwasher, that's just one of the small pieces.
That's not available at a Home Depot or that, right?
Right.
Okay. What was this...
There are variations of that, that you could find in stores. This particular one is not.
Okay. What was the second thing you mentioned?
And this is also, can keep in mind, you know, an inaugural program for this, as there are other products or promotions to keep involved. You know, I think while this is a step of it, this is a good way to start, without any cost to the city, to start reaching out to your citizens and to start getting this on the minds of your citizens without necessarily having, you know, it's voluntary on their part. It's not taking money on your part. So while this may not be the end-all, be-all, I think, you know, I would look at this more as a step.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Okay, say we take part in this program and that, how do you launch it to the people in our community? Is a, are you looking at, putting a flyer out, educating the people what this whole program's about? Or will that be at the city's cost? How are you looking to launch this whole program into the committee? I mean, I just...
There are a variety of ways.
Michael?
Go ahead, Michael. The question was really how we would launch this campaign. And I said, you know, we wouldn't do that in a box without input from you and others in the city. In, out in California where we're doing this right now, they have involved their high school. They have a high school who is interested in this, in a high school class. And in addition to emails that are coming out from the city, they have got postcards and a Facebook page, or, you know, dealing with high schools. So they're into using the social media part of it. But in addition, we've got several thousand postcards printed that these high schoolers are actually going door-to-door and posting these around, getting it out. So depends on, it's kind of tailored to what you think is going to work best in your community. If you've got a standard mailer, a newsletter, it can go out as, in addition to a newsletter. If you've got bills that get mailed out, we can have stuffers go in those bills. It's really kind of dependent on what you think will work best in your community.
Mr. Mayor.
So the $29, depending on the apartment or the home, $29 to $150, that's a one-time fee?
Yes.
And then, that's it, there's nothing else? Because I'm, you know, I'm looking at this and I'm listening to an infomercial, and I'm going to have the residents ask me, "Well, what's this about? Are you guys just selling, trying to sell something like they do on every TV channel, you know?" I want to make sure I have an answer. I mean, personally, I'll probably end up, because I'm, right now, I'm in the process of trying to figure out how to save on water and electric, and believe me, on top of the kids, turn that light off and turn the faucet off and whatnot. And I'll be honest with you, I'll probably try it, because, let's face it, if the residents come to me, I want to make sure I have an answer for them on what this is.
Right, right. And in the residential program, you know, that is a first step of it. There's also a home audit guide that you can purchase. There are multiple products.
Is that an extra?
Yes. Yes, yeah. To do, there is a residential software that you can actually do to go and do an audit. There is tips on there that you can do at no cost that will be posted on there at no cost. There are some additional that goes into more detail that are available at some cost. Again, I think the idea is that this is a step, and as we find what works for you, we could add, we could have this be a continual addition. But the idea is to get started that, yes, it's a, for most people, it would be a one-time purchase of products that would then help them save money, so they're saving more than what they're investing in it. And then the goal would be, you know, when we met with the Clean Air Accounts Committee, there was a business owner on that committee, and, you know, she was very interested in how we could take that to the chamber and get the businesses involved. Again, while this is a first step of it, the goal is really to try and get some of these initiatives out through the community. And you're just, you're really kind of the educator for the community.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I understand that this is going to California. Any other programs like this in Illinois that's doing it?
Not that I'm aware of, not similar to this. I mean, there are some programs that are offered by utility companies that are run through the utilities, but not really through the municipalities. Now, there may be some that I'm not aware of, but not that I'm aware of.
Because if you look at California... One more question.
Please follow up, yes.
You mentioned that it's a one-time fee of, say, $149. You're saying the scraper's never going to go bad or to replace those things that you can't buy in the stores? So how do you, is a person going to be stuck buying a $149 kit for a scraper? You know? Because you can't buy it in the store.
Right, yeah, and I see your point. But if someone came up to me and said, you know, even if in the short term, if you give me $150, I'll give you $1,200 in return, I would probably take that. So, you know, I think there is a, the peak of a short-term savings, will that go down as these products wear out? Are you never going to have to buy a bulb to replace? No, certainly not, you're going to have to do that. But it gives them a convenient kit so they can instantly, you know, implement what's in here and on their next utility bill, see a savings and see that savings coming back to them.
But that's not my...
Okay, so, Michael, going forward in this conversation that I'm going to call on the aldermen that are asking questions, then I'll let Jen answer it, and then I'll let Jen ask you if you want to add anything, just so like, because I know you're not in the room, so you're not seeing the nonverbal communication. How does that sound? Michael?
As we continue to ask questions, I will go ahead and field the question and then, and then ask you, since you cannot kind of see what's going on here in the room, if you have additional items you'd like to add.
Okay. Alderman Woods.
Yeah, thank you. As Alderman Winger said, you know, I was interested in this program too. I did talk to Zero Carbon at the IML, had a couple extensive conversations. I've done a little research. All the questions are valid, you know, some of the same questions I had. Can I go buy this anywhere else? Yes, I can, you know? But I think that Jen and Michael just summed it up. Michael stole some of my thunder, and it really is an educational process and a one-point stop or one-stop shop for those items. And the fact that they do have the different size kits at different dollar amounts, I think, helps people out. This is, again, as it says, edging towards zero-carbon emissions and saving. So we're not forcing it down the residents' throat. We don't make them purchase it. It's just a place where they can come, purchase the kits, hopefully get a little education, whether it's from us or Zero Carbon, some of their print stuff, and move forward. We've all talked about these issues, and as much as there's some things that I could go back and forth with on zero-carbon, I think it's an excellent start to get people thinking about it and using these products. Thank you.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
I think where Alderman Wesley, Roy Wesley was going is, what, what is the longevity of this kit? Is there a certain, how long does it last? I mean, it...
Michael, on the testing, could you answer that as far as the, the life cycle of the items that are in the kit?
Does that answer?
Did you answer the question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Woods.
Yeah, just a little follow-up to that question, because I had some of the same questions, people, and I talked to Zero Carbon about it. Again, let's not lose sight of the fact that whether we bought a light bulb in this kit or went to the hardware store, whether you bought incandescent fluorescent, whatever, LED lighting, you're, you're in fact going to have to buy a light bulb or a product. Doesn't matter really where you get it. Will they wear out? Yeah. I mean, this kit will wear out at some point. But whether you bought the kit or not, the product you bought's going to wear out. So I guess the big question is, you know, is there some savings for the residents in, in putting this together and adding three, five, 10, cost-saving products, carbon emission reduction products in the house at one time? And I think that that's the crux to the program, is to get people to think and move forward collectively. Thank you.
Alderman Shaki.
It sounds like to me you're saying that this is the program that'll be self-sustaining and that new things, as they come on the market, would probably be added to the program or to the kits. But I'm just kind of curious as to what, what's a furnace whistle and what's a toilet tummy? Are they going to be telling us what those...
Michael, would you like to answer that and the explanation of the furnace whistle and the toilet tummy? Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay, then, to actually start this program out, we'll go through some of the next steps, and then I'll look for a motion. The, the first step would be to adopt the ordinance, which is in, in the packet, and it would go to City Council next week for a formal vote. And then after that's passed, then, Jen, how do you see the next steps on implementing the website? That you would work with city staff to get that going, and then we'd start coming up with methods?
Right, right. The next step would be if there was a, a group willing, it could be the Clean Air Accounts Committee or some committee that would be willing to do some work with us just on market strategy and strategizing how we provide the marketing templates. We would work with your web designer to get the information we needed to on the website. Really what we need from you is some, some coordination, communication, and input, just to get your ideas on, on what would work best in your, in Wooddale.
Okay, okay. Okay, then, does anyone wish to add anything to Pastor, Mr. Murmurs? Okay. Then with that being said, I'll, I'll look for a motion to adopt this resolution. Is, is there a motion on this?
So moved, second.
Does there, okay, there's a motion and a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, but just to stay on this topic for a moment, that Mr. Mayor would like to make an announcement and discussion on the upcoming Green Fair, how timely this is, that this is all coming together.
Since we're on zero-carbon and green initiatives, City Wooddale Green Fair, Saturday, April 21st, here at City Hall, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And they will have electric car display, vehicle charging station, display for home and business, documents shredding, personal papers only, no businesses, free gas can, while they last, I think.
Yeah, correct.
Low emissions, free gas, that's the low emissions can, free CFL bulbs giveaway, rain barrel display and demo on how to build your own, electronics recycling, computers, monitors, TVs, printers, Lions Club collection, glasses, keys, and hearing aid recycling. I would encourage all the residents to participate, April 21st, Saturday, 10 to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
And then, thank you to Michael for being available online, and Jen, thank you for coming out and taking us through this. I look forward to launching this.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity. If anybody has additional questions, both the chief and Alderman Mayor have my contact information, as well as Michael Renzi's, if anybody would like to have any further discussions with us, we'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Then I'll hand the meeting back to Alderman Coles.
Okay. This is a report and recommendation on CSO vehicles replacement. CSO means community service cars. We have two cars that are going to be replaced, which are not cars, but they're pickup trucks. They're both 2006 with 70,000 miles plus another, oh, say, 40,000 miles of idling. When they were ordered by Chief Benowitz, and I, I ordered them, I was head of that department too, and I thought he ordered four-wheel drive, and he only ordered two-wheel drive. And when we had that back snowstorm last year, the old two-wheelers didn't do very well in heavy snow. So we're replacing, we're replacing one of them in last year's budget, which hasn't come through yet, and we have the money for that one. So we're only going to get one right now, and next, in May, when the new budget goes through, if it goes through, we will order the other one. And they'll be all four-wheel drive now. But they'll pick up, they'll be F-150 pickup trucks. So there'll probably be six cylinders with turbo boost and probably that's what they'll have in it. Has the chief got any questions?
No, nothing further, just that this is a part of our vehicle replacement program to keep cycling vehicles through as they're approaching that, you know, the higher mileage things. One of the vehicles will replace the current vehicle that we use for traffic enforcement grants. You'll see it sitting in the parking lot. The computer just went bad on that. So rather than spend a couple thousand on that, one of these vehicles, the old vehicles would replace that and will put it into use. And the other vehicle would be turned over to the city garage, either for fleet use or auction, as they normally would, so. And these vehicles are, about half of them are paid for through court supervision fines that can only be used for vehicle purchases pursuant to statute.
So do we have to make, will we have to make a motion? I don't think, we do? Yeah, all right. We'll make a motion for the replacement of one F-2012, F-150, four-wheel drive, probably be a six-cylinder, I don't know, but that's what they're coming with mostly, with turbo charge. And for this current budget, and one 2012 or 2013 for next year's budget, which is in May. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question? All right. Question? Go ahead.
The motion's just for one vehicle.
The motion's for one vehicle now, and, and we'll vote on the other one when?
Budget.
Next budget.
Okay.
Chief?
If I could comment on that real quick. The reason we came at one time, because I'd be coming back if the budget gets approved next week and doing the same request for another vehicle. So if we could get approval, we would not order the second one until the May 1 budget takes effect. But also, if we can take delivery around the same time, we can save, I believe it's $175 in delivery fees.
And I also take it these are state purchase?
It's purchased through the Northwest Municipal Conference. There's no actual state purchase on this, but it is a competitive bid process, and the cost we're getting it for is substantially cheaper than you could get in a dealership. And it's similar to a state purchase price, it's just there's no state bid, but the Northwest Municipal Conference, which we're a part of, that's where we purchase it through.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Eugene?
So the motion is on the floor for, for one, or according to the memo, I approve with the purchase, two community service vehicles.
Two. One now and one for the next budget.
Why would we not make the motion to proceed with the paper? Because I'll tell you one thing, I don't see how anyone could actually shoot down a replacement vehicle. Therefore, he could get in on order. I mean, he could tell them that we're probably going to get two. I mean, the memo says two. Then you should just go one.
I know, but the way it's worded, the way it was worded and the thing that, it, it won't come into effect until May, till May 1st, when the budget is supposed to be accepted. Am I right?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, maybe the finance director can speak to this, if we did order both now, you know, one would be budgeted out of this current year and one out of the next May 1 fiscal year, similar to how we pre-order when there's a factory cutoff. Sometimes we've ordered squads in the past because we had to meet a cutoff date. There's not a cutoff date at this time, but we need to proceed with the first one during this budget year. The other one wouldn't be delivered till after the May 1 fiscal year too. So however council wants to do that would be fine, it's just, I didn't want to come back three weeks later and ask for the exact same request again.
Well, then, the mayor?
Chief, so are you looking for the, the motion to be approval of both cars right now? Am I understanding that right? Because I think we're only approving one.
We're approving one automatically.
But the motion should be for two.
It should be for two.
And the second, and the second car, upon approval of the budget, would be automatically put in, is that...
That's correct, because we, we definitely would not order before next week, when the, if the council approves the final budget, nothing would be ordered before that budget was approved.
All right, we could, it could be on for both of them then. Okay, but a second?
One more question.
One more question, go ahead.
Do we have the right to spend money for next year's budget? Even though the budget isn't passed? I guess as to the city manager. I mean...
It's very, very simple. We're just placing the order for the vehicles now. We're going to take the money out of one vehicle, next year's budget, and one vehicle this year's budget.
You're still spending funds?
For next year's budget.
Which is not approved yet. That's my, that's my question to...
We're not spending it until it's approved.
Okay.
Rule call.
Alderman Woods?
What's the motion? Both cars?
Second.
Second, the second, okay?
The second car's contingent on approval of budget.
On approval of the budget. That's how I had it worded, right off the bat.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara? Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
All right. I'd have to consider for, for future meetings. There is none? No, so adjourning, make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I think I'm going to go next, because, okay, so I will be calling the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee to order, but I just want to mention to you, Tarek Green, Mr. Crowley, and Ms. Winters, if, if you, we have about three more meetings, like, that they go in a row, so we won't be insulted if you do leave at some point, so, just so you know, okay? Because it will get long. So I'm going to call to order Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee, and will the committee here please reflect, say members are present, there's a quorum, make a motion to approve minutes dated March 8, 2012. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Downtown Park Planning Concept. With that, that this did go to our Streetscape Committee, and they did approve the concept and recommended that this committee approve it as well. And in our packets are the concepts of previous work from our Uler Consulting Group. Mr. Forrest, would you like to take us through the rest? Mr. Forrest, would you like to take us through the rest?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. For several years, staff and elected officials and several different committees have tried to come up with some ideas for developing the area commonly known as Community Park right now. For a long time, we were kind of on hold, waiting to see what was going to happen with the Irving Park bypass. Once that went down, we had some more discussions, and then it was put on hold again while we were waiting to see what was going to happen with the Commercial Street underpass. Finally, that is kind of out of the question. Now we know that Commercial Street is going to be rerouted to the north. And with the property that the city has already been able to acquire, we're going to have a nice piece of property that we can really develop into a community area, whether it be a commercial retail town center or more of a recreation place that hopefully we can draw not only the residents to, but people that happen to go by Wood Dale on the train or driving, they'll see some activities and start using that park. Another factor in this is I think that the thinking now with this council is looking at Salt Creek as being an asset as opposed to being a burden. That's big, that's really big, because a lot of communities, if you've got a water feature in your town, you're able to develop that, be it a river walk, some sort of a lake. Salt Creek, although sometimes it qualifies as being a river, it really is an asset for us. So recently, the city, we had an opportunity to meet with Euler Consulting. The principal of this firm, Ed Euler, was one of the designers of Millennium Park in Chicago. His business has also worked on many large-scale public projects, such as the Gateway Arch Park in St. Louis. They've worked on the Lincoln Park Zoo, restoring Lincoln Park. I mean, the list, you've got it in your packets, the list just goes on and on and on. I think there's about four pages of qualifications and projects that not only Mr. Euler's worked on, but his partner, John Nelson, who is here this evening to address the council. They're very well-known throughout the country and probably internationally as well. And they're interested in working with the city of Wood Dale to help us actually develop a sense of place, come up with a conceptual vision plan with alternatives that we can pick and choose and kind of put together, you know, hopefully what's going to be a very attractive downtown Wood Dale area over the next few years. So really, I would like to introduce Mr. Nelson. We can have him go up to the podium and give a presentation, and then he'll be able to field some questions.
This buddy?
Oh, it's Mr. Nelson, so, what, do you want to have the cable or scan there? It's up to you.
I don't really have a formal presentation with, you've probably got examples of your work in your package, so... Basically, you gave a better introduction of us than I would. Ed and I have both been doing this kind of thing for over 30 years, and in fact, Ed could not be here tonight because he's working on a park up in Minneapolis and was called there tonight. I think what we were proposing to do is really a study to create a vision plan that would get public input. I think you have to create, we would want to work with people you would identify as the stakeholders, to first of all, create a program. Should it be entirely recreational, or should there be recommendations for a central business area along Irving? We would then sort of pull together a menu of ideas at the first stage. Conceptual landscape, pedestrian-friendly corridor, perhaps bicycle routes, maybe an outdoor performance venue, maybe there's some service structures for recreation that are required. Interactive sculpture or, today, there is, sculpture is not merely a statue, but it can be activated with light shows, with really marvelous things that, some of you may be familiar with the Crown Fountain in Millennium Park. Well, certainly, certainly you wouldn't do anything that big, but you can do a lot with LED lights now that make very interesting urban features. Maybe gardens and play space, nature trails. All those kind of things we'd take a look at and first create a big menu, have a public meeting and see what catches on, because there'd be budget figures attached to each of these things, so which things are realistic and which things aren't. Maybe there can be some private support for a certain kind of thing. You might have a local business or local people that are willing to chip in to help fund a kind of public amenity. And as I said before, creating identity along Irving Park so that as people go through it, either by the train or by the automobile, they know they're going through Wood Dale and it sticks in their head.
Great.
It should then reinforce the business and commercial enterprises that are located along there, too, so that people want to come back and want to spend time here rather than drive right through. That's sort of the general approach we would take. But why don't I answer questions? And that would be...
Sure. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Jen. In talking with you and Ed and Christine and Frank when we had our meeting, this isn't just Irving Park Road, this is also incorporating all the way up to the...
Yes.
Our reservoir, forest preserve land...
Yes.
From the creek...
Salt Creek to Central and from Irving, how, to School Street, I think.
Right, and...
It's the general area we're going to take a look at and try and pull all of that together.
And after that discussion that we had with staff and the Alderman, I did have a little quick informal with the Forest Preserve, letting them know that we're doing, we're looking at doing a concept plan and we're including the Forest Preserve, and we're going to be looking to partner with them in this as well. So that's already put a little notion out there.
Any other questions?
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, so, more or less, let me, you're just going to do a study on what you think could go in these spots, am I correct?
Yes, there'd be recommendations that would be boiled down. In the first phase, initially, we would come and present to whomever you decide we need to present to, whether it's an open commuter meeting or whether it's this committee, a list or a big menu with a lot of ideas. We'd then narrow that down, and what we would end up with is a final report after the third or the fourth meeting, which would be specific recommendations that meet your needs and things that you're happy with and feel are feasible and will achieve the results that you're after of, creating a sense of place.
Okay. Let me interrupt you here. We are in the process of doing a safety improvement in the main heart of this program. So would you skip that area for the time being until we see that whole project being completed before you come forward something to us? Or would you do it? Because we got the plans to do that, but those plans may all change once they start the engineering and change that. So I, I mean, I just don't want us to go forward with that section if we're doing something with that intersection, and we got all these beautiful architect designs here, and now we'll just put them off to the side because now they won't work in that section.
Well, ideally, we'd like to integrate that into the plan. We don't want to, any other improvements that are going on simultaneously, whatever they are, we would want to gather all that information and incorporate that in the plan. Now, if we know that the final safety plan won't be done for six months, we may not be able to issue our plan for six months if you want to totally coordinate with that.
Probably two years.
Well, that's a long time to wait. Hopefully, we would then have to be flexible in the plan documents that, depending on what the alternatives were there, they would fit into what we're recommending. As long as we're aware of what, of direction they're going, we take that into account.
I'm going to call on Alderman Wood, then Alderman Coles, then Alderman Shaki. Alderman Woods?
Thank you. To touch on what Alderman Eugene Wesley was talking about, there is a timeframe and probably an extensive one, but I think that we'll know 95% of what's happening. We don't need to know all the details. This is a visionary plan, a higher view of what's going to happen. And given that the company actually came to us, and I think that reading their proposal and knowing what we spend in engineering and design, it's really almost a gift, and we'd be silly not to accept this. So at this time...